All right, folks, we're just waiting for 6:30 on the dot and we will start. I don't want anybody to ever accuse us of starting early. I know that's, that's a novel concept sometimes, but I don't want anybody to accuse us of starting early.
Lisa, are you about ready?
We are ready. Last thing, it streams up, recording is working. Just telling Jim all the stars must be in the right place tonight.
Got chickens in the back for weeks.
What that, huh?
Yeah.
That movie?
The guy from Major League.
Hi ladies, how are you?
Fraged or whatever thing he had his lock.
Jobu?
Huh?
Jobu?
Yes. That was funny.
Chicken foot.
Joey, you're waiting till that particular one, right? Um, if you want to talk about that, if we can wait till that agenda item versus citizens who meant, but it's going to be truly up to you.
Okay.
Okay. Hmm? Okay. All right, guys. It is now 6:30. We'll call this meeting to order. First thing we do in every meeting is the invocation, so would also value your heads. Dear God, tonight is the night that we need to, to listen to the public and to make some decisions on things for our city and for our needs moving forward. We ask that you provide us with wisdom and guidance in making the proper decisions tonight. We ask that you show each and every one of us from City Council, the citizens, wisdom and guidance in the way we project what we need to cite concerning these matters, that you always put your edge of protection over us and our city. We are blessed to have a base of citizens that love the city and care deeply for how it's going to turn out. In your name we pray. All right, you will all stand and join me for a question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right.
Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, can everybody hear me okay? Sometimes I can't, I can't tell if this thing is projecting or not. First off, as we say in every meeting, the rules of decorum are in effect. For those of you that, I've noticed a few faces in here I don't recognize, that just means like, we want everybody to be civil and polite and professional. And I truly believe we can all do that. All right, since there are no citizens' comments at this point, we have one individual that wants to speak on a gida, on agenda item 6.4, which is the public hearing concerning our tax rate, so we'll hold that one until then. So the first thing will be the approval of minutes, the August 6, 2019 special work session. Do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
Mayor, I got a couple of quick comments for you.
Yes, sir.
For 5-1, I would like the meeting notes to show, I know we had discussed that break-even number that night, but it wasn't recorded in the notes. So whatever that number was, if we could include that. Lisa, do you recall that number?
Break-even for?
The sewer rate?
Oh, it was $83.
That was the, that was the break-even rate? Okay.
All right, so would you like to make a motion to approve those with that in there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, any discussion on that? That is motion to approve with the, with the number of $83 on the sewer thing in there? If there's no discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. Moving on to August 12, special work session, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the August 12 City Council minutes for the special work session, as written.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right.
One change, Mayor. Just on item two, it says 2019 to 2010, a typo there.
Which one?
So item two.
Oh, okay.
On the 8, 12, 19.
Okay.
I'm assuming that means 2020.
Okay.
All right. With that change in there, any discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. Moving on to item 6.1, public hearing, discussion and action concerning the application of JK Web properties requesting an amendment to the existing Kingsbridge Plan Development Office 1 zoning district to change the rear building setback to 15 feet and to allow a maximum lot coverage requirement of 80% for a purchasing office to be built. The property is loc, the loc, property location is described as 1.065 acres, also described as 5763 South State Highway 205 is described in Exhibit D of the Kingsbridge Plan Development District, McLendon-Chisholm. Mr. Fisher? If you'll just turn the button on so we can hear you off of one of those.
Mayor, Council members, Maxwell Fisher, city planner. Yes, Kevin Webb is requesting approval of a amendment of a portion of a PD, PD, which is the Kingsbridge PD. We're trying to create a sub-area to basically adjust some of the development standards for an office development. And it's, it's basically an office that would match in scale and size with the office that's next door at 5763 South State Highway 205. I'll go over some of the, some of the details of the project. The reason for the amendment is basically there's a lot coverage definition issue. Lot coverage definition is generally just the building coverage on the site. In this case, it includes both the building coverage and impervious coverage, and so it's very onerous, and so it doesn't match with the industry standard on what, or even what most cities would evaluate or consider a lot coverage. So this would adjust that to provide a lot coverage that makes sense for an office district that would allow for an office to be built of roughly 6 to 6,500 square feet. In addition to that, they would also be adjusting the maximum building size from 6,000 feet to, there's, there's, originally it was 7,200, and then they made an amendment to 5,998 to stay under that 6,000 threshold, but they'd like to have that cap removed. I don't think the exact square footage is, is known, and so it may be slightly over 6,000. We're looking right around 6,063, 6,400, so that would remove that cap. We'd also a lot, better align the parking requirement with actual parking demand with a 1 to 3/30 ratio, which is an industry standard. So those are the, those are the main outlines, the details of the request. And with this sub-area we're creating, we're not affecting any of the other PD conditions or anything that's in place. It's only going to impact what would be allowed on the remainder of the office parcel. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote 5 to 0 to approve this request per staff recommendation and as proposed by the applicant, and I will stand for questions.
Is that the building that's showing up there, is that the one that the water company's in?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, immediately next door. And that was part of the reason why we recommended approval, is we thought the request was to allow an office building that's in scale and character of what's next door. I believe that's on the plan. Let me pull that up real quick. Well, plan. It has 75 by 91, so that's roughly, that's 6,000 square feet.
Council, have any questions?
I just have one, and perhaps I'm missing it here, but I'm sure it's, it's obviously covered. ADA requirements are all met with this. It refers generally to requirements of the parking lots and that kind of thing, but all that stuff.
Yeah, yeah, typically ADA requirements would be something we would look at, at the permit stage. We'd really look into detail and make sure they meet all the ADA requirements before we issue a building permit. So that would be reviewed a little bit later in the process.
Okay, thank you.
I believe the applicant is also here to answer any questions or maybe make a brief, brief comment or two.
Anyone else on council, have any questions for Mr. Fisher?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. All right, it is now 6:39. I'm going to open it up for public hearing on this. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak on this? Going once?
I have a comment on that.
Yes, sir.
Both for you, Will, drive. You know, that particular area is going to be a little congested. Those buildings are on the left side before you get to Kingsbridge, all right? Or, or, there's another development just, I guess would be east of there, east of there. And I know we had a major accident there, not too long going up that hill near there. And I'm wondering, with all the activity going on, including now we've got a potential building, which I have no objection to, by the way, that's not an issue. I think the issue is more the text dot. And then in addition to that, we're going to be widening 205. So I would know, I would like to know what the city's plan is relative from a safety standpoint, or the developer's plan of safety. Would there be a caution light going in there or something there to make people aware of that particular area, because it is getting to be a little hazardous. People are going 70 miles an hour here, maybe reduce the speed limit on 205, I don't know. But I've had a couple, one person told me they were running off the road right in front of Marter.
Thank you, sir. And I can't answer your question, but I will tell you a lot of things in what you're trying, in what you're asking about. Those are things, those are discussions with text dot and text dot. I, from my understanding, has certain formulas on how they put signal light, stop signs, all those different kinds of things that they have at their disposal. They have certain formulas that they have to go through in certain traffic studies before they do some of that. That's the best answer I can give you at the moment. But I do share your concerns, and I believe council does.
But they may not be aware that there's another building going in there either, so.
Sure.
And then you've got the new construction on John King, become a major highway, going into 205, which makes things a little worse in that area. And I think the city needs to be engaged as much as they can with text dot, considering there's going to be other development probably on the south side of 205, also across Marter. And it's just a matter of time. I think there's a service station planned to go in over there, an Exxon station on 5 acres, and then you've got another, four parcels of 5 acres all the way up to Full and Road. So I think that the city needs to be engaged sooner than later, that's all.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else? Going once? Going twice? It is now, hold on, kiss, my computer doesn't always agree with me, and it likes to reset itself. It is now 6:42. Public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve the application brought forth.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose a motion that we approve 6.1 point as, as written and also as recommended by PNC.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion by council?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If you approve this this evening, we will bring you a formal ordinance for approval, so this will be approving the application.
Okay.
We would report the actual ordinance at the next meeting.
Okay. So we just bring the ordinance the next meeting? Okay. I've got a motion, I have a second. If there is no discussion by council, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, did not hear you. Show that unanimous. I'm getting old, my ears, my ears don't always hear everything. And yes, I did admit that I'm getting old. All right, moving on to the next item, 6.2. Discussion and action regarding a development plan and landscape plan for property related to the application of the JK Web properties requesting an amendment to the existing King Bridge Plan Development Office 1 zoning district for a purchasing office to be built. The property location is described as 1.065 acres, as described, also described as 5763 State, South State Highway 205 is described in Exhibit D of the Kingsbridge Plan Development District, McLendon-Chisholm. Okay. Mr. Fisher, again.
Mayor, Council, Maxwell Fisher, city planner. This is a companion item brought by Kevin Webb. It is a request for a development plan, a landscape plan, that basically outlines the layout and provides the landscaping in detail. And so that's basically it, and the ordinance will be brought for you at the, at the next meeting if it's approved by the council. I answered, or answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Any questions for Mr. Fisher? Thank you.
Thanks. Oh, I'm sorry, PNC did recommend approval, 5-0 of that request.
Thank you.
Sorry, bud.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve. All right, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. All right, moving on to 6.3, discussion and direction to staff regarding all matters related, proposed budget for fiscal year starting October 1, 2019, and ending September 30th, 2020, including but not limited to expected revenues and expenditures, debt obligations, fund balance policy effective, and rollback tax rates and future public hearings. Before we discuss that, I'm going to read a little, little statement here. All right, we're talking about the proposed budget, the proposed budget tax rate, okay? This is, this is our city, and when I say ours, that means all of us. Folks, we will be opening a public hearing on the tax rate momentarily, and everyone will have an opportunity to speak. But before we do that, I want to say a few words and provide counsel an opportunity to say a few words about the proposed budget and the tax rate that supports the budget, and the staff, and staff is requesting direction from City Council regarding the proposed fund balance policy. First, I don't want to raise taxes. I, I am like you, we all work hard, we all deserve as much of our money as we would like. But unfortunately, Uncle Sam says otherwise a lot of times and takes, takes his fair share. For us to have a city and maintain a city, we end up having to pay for that as well. When council reviewed the first draft budget based on the rollback rate of 11, 9, 7, 4, 3 cents per 1, $1 valuation, it was abundantly clear that adopting the rollback rate would not generate the tax revenue needed to continue current service levels and plan appropriately for our future. Council looked at these items, looked for items to cut, but the truth is the city operates already on a very lean budget. There's no fluff and no frivolous items. I wish there was more things we could cut. What I will not cut is your public safety. We deserve to be safe and secure in our city, whether it's law enforcement, whether it's fire, whether it's medical services, you know, that is, that is something that everybody desires to have, and it does cost to have that. I want to mention a few reasons why council has proposed a budget, a budget generating revenue in the amount of $1.3 million, so the tax increase from 15 cents to 16.5 cents to support this. Those increase will cost the average homeowner about $65 more per year. The rollback rate for 2019, 2020 is lower than the effective rate this year due to extra debt payments that were applied in the last two years. The extra debt payments pushed back the rollback rate to a much higher number as debt service may rise as high as necessary to cover debt expenses, including scheduled debt payments and any extra debt payments. As council has indicated, a preference to move funds from the debt side to the operating and maintenance side of the budget where funds are needed most to maintain and enhance services. This causes the rollback rate to decrease. This explains why the rollback rate is lower than the effective rate this year. In a past election, citizens voted for a portion of sales tax to be dedicated to property tax relief. This also caused the rollback rate to shrink by approximately a penny. The city also provides a 65 and older tax exemption, while great for our population, our, as our population is, is getting older, it does cause a loss of tax revenue into the city. Currently, the city does have surplus funds, but those funds are not dedicated for a particular purpose. This could cause confusion, as it may appear funds are available for generally, general operating expenses and may suggest that a tax rate increase is unnecessary. Most cities maintain some level of a fund balance and/or plan for future major purchases by establishing a capital improvement fund. Fund balance amounts vary from city to city as priorities are determined by council. Smaller cities generally maintain a higher level of fund balance as percentage of the budget as compared to larger cities due to smaller cities having fewer revenue sources. A fund balance policy allows a city to consider fund balance needs when budgeting and setting a tax rate. A funds, fund balance policy allows a city to dedicate funds for assigned and/or unassigned uses. The proposed tax rate of 16 point, or 16.5 rate will provide a surplus of funds for the 2019, 2020 that may be applied to various fund balances, including a fire capital replacement fund. A fire capital replacement fund will allow the city to accumulate funds over time to replace outdated or worn equipment for the purpose of purchasing a new fire engine or other apparatus as considered necessary. For those of you that don't know, a new fire engine could cost as much as $800,000. Rather than issuing new debt when the replacement engine is required, adequate fund balance will allow the city to purchase the needed equipment without acquiring any new debt. Additionally, the city's financial advisors suggest a fund balance policy for other uses such as revenue shortfalls or emergencies. If the city only adopts the rollback tax rate, the city will consume existing surplus in the financial years 2020 through 2021, when the safer grant funds dwindle and the city must fund an additional $218,000. Furthermore, the fire department operations will be unable to continue at the same service levels when the safer grant expires in 21, 22, when the, when the city must fund an additional $252,000. Adopting only the rollback rate will not allow the city to adequately plan for unforeseen events or replacement of capital equipment. Text dot is proposing a payment of $4.5 million, which we will get into that in another agenda item later on in the evening, for a replacement of our existing fire station. That's item 6.7 later in this evening. This station will serve the city for many years and will not cost taxpayers anything to build. However, the station will not have adequate personnel for 24/7 fire operations without an increase in revenue for when the safer grants expire. The proposed 16.5 will also allow for funds for code enforcement services, allowing the city to enforce current ordinances related to health, safety, welfare, and protection of property values. Presently, the city does not have a code enforcement officer or staff. The proposed 16.5 allows for modest raises for some staff to be determined by council and allows for the hiring of additional city hall staff should the need arise. Does not mean we are hiring, it means as the need arises. So I don't want anybody to take away that we're going to plan on hiring a bunch of people. That is as needed. No additional staff will be hired without council approval. All right, council, do we have, does anyone have any comments?
I do, I do have a comment.
Miss Kippit?
I think establishing a fund balance policy is really a smart way to go. The way I've been wrestling with it, it seems to me like it's a savings account that's for specific things, such as the equipment replacement, the sewer, the sewer fund, the San Jose Road, Road bonds. Having all that money identified as certain pots will be, is fiscally responsible, and I, I would like to suggest that we do adopt that fund now, the balance policy. And we've got to be fiscally responsible to be good stewards of everybody's money.
Absolutely, thank you, Ms. Kippit. Anyone else?
I would just like to add that I agree with Councilmember Kippit. Just like any household living paycheck to paycheck, you're always at the risk of some unforeseen situation creating dire consequences, and I don't want that for the city. The budget we're talking about later doesn't even include any raises for the firemen, so they'll actually be waiting, or making less next year than they are this year, just based on inflation. And we still have other things. We have roads that are almost third world. And, and talk to anyone, I'd talk to people from all over the state about the importance of owning our own water. Right now, we're kind of at hostage to RCH, and that's nothing to be on the agenda anytime soon, but it is something that's going to have to be addressed someday. So right now, we're having to pay, it feels good to say, keep taxes super low, but we're having to pay for some of those decisions previously, and it's time to make the tough decisions, in my opinion, to do the right thing for the city moving forward.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Bloom. Anyone else? All right. Council, direction of staff to move forward with the fund balance policy for consideration on the next agenda, or our next City Council meeting agenda?
Do you need to know how much money needs to be, or are you managing the government account, or you propose up to us? It's really up to you. You may have suggestion, maybe how many, there's currently, there's $600,000 around. You could split however you like, between the two funds, capital replacement, and reduce general, general fund balance, or whatever it is that happened. 640 split, however you like, it's much easier to be, to be that early to start. And of course, this is going to be amended.
And I'd also, I would also like to think that we put the funds that were going to be gaged on the end of the UFD directly into the capital fleet replacement fund, absolutely in that. We have that here marked right there. So you all want to do 50/50 split of that, of that $600,000?
Yes.
So 50% would go into capital fleet replacement fund, and the other would go into the unassigned fund balance.
Actually, what I think I would like to see, and it doesn't mean we won't change it to that, but what I'd like to see is yours and Ray's recommendation based on talking to chief and his needs, so that we, we can look at, maybe we need a little more over here, not necessarily 50/50, maybe 60/40, 70/30, I don't know, and see what the recommendation is. We may come right back to council saying 50/50. But I, I would like to have our resident experts in those areas give us their recommendation, and then we'll move from there, if council will. And we pay them, we might as well use them.
If it works, we will, we'll kind of give a rating. We'll put our recommendation, or that to you for the longer.
Absolutely.
And then we have to have a side by side, set time for it, or can we decide at the next meeting? And you can decide at the next meeting, or when you can adopt it, on the night of the actual, as long as it's adopted.
All right, well, you've got direction on that. There's no other comments from council. Council, thank you. From my perspective, the proposed budget and tax rate is reasonable and fiscally responsible in what we're trying to do on behalf of our city. So with that... So with that, I will move to 6.4 on the agenda, which is a public, public hearing will be held to receive comments regarding setting the tax rate at 16.5 for $100 valuation on all taxable property for fiscal year, starting October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020. The time is now 6:59. We're now working for public hearing. Ms. Jody, I know you waited patiently. Now is your time.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to, I want to acknowledge this council for hosting authentically-led town halls. I think that is really important to acknowledge where our city is growing and, and how this council is truly requesting feedback. Having said that, I have an ask. As we prepare, as you prepare for the next public hearing on September 10 about the proposed tax rate, as a citizen first, there are a lot of questions as to why this tax rate is necessary. Mayor Short, I thought you did a really nice job of providing the overview a short while ago, so thank you for that. I certainly understand, having been present for a number of council meetings over the last few years, that you were not left with a surplus budget, that this council in particular came in having to make up quite a bit of deficit based off of some predecessor decisions. What I would ask, though, as you prepare for the next public hearing, is more transparency. There is a lot of emotionally charged, inaccurate information being relayed through different forums, primarily through social media, and they're emotionally charged. And when you connect with somebody emotionally, people react emotionally. It's, it's, anybody objective understands that. What I would ask, and there are certain members of the council that I definitely thank for all of the transparency you've provided, but as a whole, I think it could be increased. And I think providing real factual, objective information to the public at large will be necessary for us to get over the, what I perceive, a little bit of this apathetic mentality that many of the voters of McClendon-Chisholm have right now. They're tired. They're tired. And so, you know, to get some objective facts, non-emotional, but based off of historical, where we're at, where we are going, and why you need this city support behind you, I think would be really powerful. So that would be my ask, and I thank you for your time, and I thank you for the information provided tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Jody, I have a question for you.
Jody.
Yes.
Nathan's got a question for you.
I'm back.
Okay. So you want more transparency from the council?
Mm-hmm.
How do we do that?
I think you hit it with social media, Nathan, or it's Councilmember Hodges. That is where the bulk of the emotionally charged information is coming. That is a forum that a select few have chosen to connect with citizens. I don't know that they have a huge audience, but the point is, you fight fire with fire. I mean, that's, that's what we do.
Well, can I, can I tell you something out of honesty?
Yeah.
So I posted on my little Facebook page that there's going to be a work session for the budget and encourage people to come, and this was for the second budget meeting.
Yes.
And there were two people here that night.
I know.
So, you know, I don't know what else we as a council, and I'm not trying to be...
Nope. Don't take it like that. Don't take it like that. Yeah.
I don't want you to think that I'm trying to, I mean, I want honest dialogue. Do we need to post more? Do we need to put it on the city's Facebook page?
I can answer some of that for you. And Jody, unfortunately, it's not your fault, it's anybody in the audience's fault, but some of us had the opportunity to go through training as newly elected officials.
That's right.
I'm going to tell you from my full-time job and what I see with social media to what I've seen since I've been in this office, social media is a very dangerous tool. And something that was taught to us that have been through the newly elected officials' training is, we're accountable for anything we put on social media, even though we may convey it the right way, they can twist that and use that against us. That's a very, very dangerous tool. And like you said, with the emotional charge of the way people are using it, I don't need a city government having battles on social media. We are more than happy to be transparent and put things on our city's website.
Right.
But as far as social media, I don't agree with the council getting out there doing that because the slip of the wrong word and somebody wants to play wordsmith, I could have a council member that's in trouble.
I think that...
That's a very dangerous area for them to play.
I think it's tremendous perspective and something that a general layperson wouldn't have. So then my ask is, what is the answer? You know, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions. Being, being a true fiscal conservative, my, my reaction is always cut expenses before we raise taxes. What are our expenses? And Mayor, I heard you say, we run incredibly slow. I don't doubt that, but I'm here to hear that. Does the general public know that? Do they understand that? And so, you know, those are facts. Those are figures. Those can't be twisted. So to what ability the council has to give that, Mayor?
We do have the ability. People can already request the information.
Yeah.
What we can post is being posted.
Yeah.
And here's the thing, and you, you know, me knowing you on a personal level, the reason I say about social media, I've seen you plus others that are in the audience, plus those that are sitting up here bash relentlessly on social media for being truthful.
I know.
You know? I don't want to see you go through that. I don't want to see them go through that. We will post the information, but even when we post the information correctly, there are some that will use it and play the wordsmith game.
They will.
To a different meaning. And, you know, do I know the right answer? I'd jump.
Yeah.
If we did, we'd be the perfect city in the county. I believe we are going to be the perfect city in the county, but...
But I think it's forums like this that allow us to figure out right answers. Right? Because it gets all of us thinking and keep coming to the table and throwing ideas out to flesh out and get that great perspective of what your training provided. It feels like just more of this open dialogue, which I know is important for every one of you up there. It's just really impactful.
What I can tell you, Jody, and I can tell anybody sitting in the audience, anybody that can, can hear, and I can speak on behalf of not myself, but council as well, if people have questions, we are accessible.
Yes.
And we will, as long as it doesn't violate anything, we will answer the question as we can. Sometimes there's things that we discuss that we can't give you an answer for. But you know what? 99% of the time, we can answer your question if you ask, we'll answer it.
Yeah.
You know? So I don't want anybody to think we are not trying to be transparent. We are trying to get the information out there. Sometimes we don't know what you want to know. If you don't ask us, it's hard to, it's hard to put everything out there. We'd be stuck putting stuff out there all the time and not get back to what we need to do to keep your city running.
Right.
But yes, ma'am, we will, we will look at trying to make sure the information's out there.
Thank you. Really appreciate y'all's time.
Is it appropriate to ask questions of each other right now, or do we need to wait until the next?
This is public hearing. I don't text right now. We do that. Is there anyone else?
I didn't fill out the form.
Name and address, sir.
Terrell Village 35, Wuncha Drive. I just want to thank the council here. Terrell Village 35.
Mr. Drive, I want to just thank you for your, your service to the community and to the city. I selected you to come up here and make these hard decisions, go through these things, get into the nuts and bolts of that, to make the decision. I view y'all, of y'all, as having no personal agendas, looking out for the city as a whole, and I want to thank you for doing that.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. If you haven't noticed, I've gotten a little more gray hair since I've been on this side of the table. All right. Sir, I think you showed some interest to want to come up and speak as well. And if, if both of you wouldn't mind, when you're done, would you fill out a sheet so she's got a record for the public hearing? Thank you, sir. Just push the button. There it goes. You're on.
My name's David Black. I'm in Seattle Lane in Sonoma Verde Development. And I agree with the mayor about the social media idea. That's not a good idea. I mean, you just saw the last campaign. There was so much mud thrown in that campaign. I'm still washing it off. Also, I agree with the lady who spoke, fiscal and transparency, but I could quantify the transparency a little bit. Maybe, like, how did you determine 16.5 was the number? You know, I see that there's about $330,000 with the tax increase, but it's still about $200,000 without changing the .15 that we currently have. So I'm curious, how did that number come up? Is there a budget for these funds? Is there a target for these separate funds you're setting up? Which I agree, it's good to set up reserve funds. But, you know, what's the plan for the money? Which money goes in which fund? And that's, that's not transparent, so that does breed a lot of questions, I suspect.
Yes, ma'am. You sure can.
In the packet, I'm not sure if you've seen the council packet, but in the council packet, which is online, the sample fund balance policy that we discussed, it is there, and it kind of lays out the different funds that we were talking about establishing, and how we would like to fund.
The 130-page packet, you're saying?
You should be able to put them on a link and go directly there, so if you go to that budget guide, you should be able to put right onto the fund balance.
Okay. I didn't see it. I didn't see it. I'm not going to go through it now.
Additionally, the fire budget, proposed budget is in the packet, but it's also listed on the website, so you can go to, have the usual budget reports, and then those budgets are there. Any questions you have, feel free to drop them on us and have me talk to you.
That's another good segue into this transparency thing. Don't use social media. Use your website.
Exactly.
I mean, who knows to go to his Facebook page? I mean, I don't know, I don't know any of you guys, but I know where your city website is.
We do put stuff on our city's website. I will tell you that it is in the process of being cleaned up because it was...
Messy.
It's very messy from the way it was used in the past, and it needs to be cleaned up to where it is easy for you as, as a citizen to see the information and understand what's there and not be used as a political form.
I didn't see any political stuff on there, really.
It's being cleaned up.
Good. Good. We don't want that. I don't want that. Also, Lisa, yeah, the, the agenda has links for each of the different documents, and if you don't want to download the 130-page thing, you just click on those links. It's very good. I mean, I kind of like what you guys have done there. But what bothered me was, you know, funds are dwindling, or it's good to have this reserve fund, and so these are sort of, be nice, I could say qualitative, but they're certainly not quantitative. And as a fiscal conservative before me says, it's good to see the numbers. How did you come up with the money?
Sir, to respond to what you were talking about, the 16.5 number?
Yeah.
We came up with that or work session because that would help fund the rest of the, the fire department out until, with the SAFER grant. Every year with the SAFER grant, the...
Yeah, I know.
We got the fire department funded personnel and their equipment funded with the SAFER grant.
$252,000.
Right. And the fund gets, dwindles as the years go on. So we felt that we needed to have the money set aside earmarked as a reserve fund to be able to adequately fund the fire department, personnel, and manpower to do that job when the SAFER grant is out.
Yeah. So in the next fiscal year after this upcoming, it's $218,000 you have to fund.
Yes. And so we're...
Yeah, I got that.
We're, we're looking ahead to the, we were just looking ahead at this point because we felt if we were going to raise the taxes to 16 cents, we didn't want to have to turn around and potentially have to do it again next year. So we felt the 16.5 could, could support us.
All right. Again, none of that stuff is, it's all just...
Oh, we'll go ahead and say that.
The 16.5 tax rate was also the recommendation by our CPA, Ray. He recommended that tax rate specifically as a break even for when the SAFER grant sunsets out.
Okay.
So the 16.5 is something that council just...
We didn't just pull it out.
We didn't pull it out of thin air. We actually, the, the...
No, I didn't say you didn't. It's just the transparency was hard to know what you did. And that's why you get probably some of that mud that's getting thrown on social media.
Yeah.
They don't have the information, but if you give the information, it shuts them up.
So, so the 16.5 was, is a break even for funding our MNO fund, which includes our fire department, as well as managing the debt ratio, and at the same time, not having to come back at a later date and then raise it again and again and again. The 16.5 was, was going to be our break even level for when the SAFER grant sunsets.
So, did I hear you say that you're not going to raise our property tax again?
No. I said the 16.5 changes it so that way we don't have to continue.
Raising it.
Well, so SAFER grant sunsets, and every year...
I understand.
We take on more financial responsibility.
Yes.
So the 16.5 covers the SAFER grant in its stead.
All right. One thing, I want to, Kippit, you, you mentioned in Sonoma Verde, the extra money would help with road funds.
No. What I, what I was trying to clarify, let me get me my this paper so I say it exactly correct.
Right.
There is a, in a fund balance, balance policy, we already have a Sonoma Verde road fund balance, and that is $97,812. Adequately, it should be between $100,000 and $500,000. But we're earmarked, we have, that money comes specifically from the Sonoma Verde. It doesn't move from the MNO to, to Sonoma Verde.
Exactly.
It's Sonoma Verde Pid Line.
That's right.
So, am I right in that?
That's right. It's not...
Right. It's Sonoma Verde Pid Line. So right now, there's $97,812.
Exactly. So it's good that people know that the citizens, the voting citizens who live in Sonoma Verde, pay between $2,400 and $3,400 every year on their property tax bill, but it's not property tax. It's the Pid. Because we funded an $8 million-plus bond to build the infrastructure that a city would have to do, and it would not be fair to the existing residents. They would have shot their tax up ridiculously. So the people who move into Sonoma Verde are paying their way, and they're paying for their own maintenance, and they're paying for the administration costs, all out of this, say, $3,000 a year addition to our property tax bills. Mr. Bloom, did you, did I understand you say the city council is looking at owning our water supply?
No, sir. I've said that that's one of the things we need to consider moving forward. I've spoken to a lot of people. This is in something we've brought before the council for a discussion. It's just something that I think needs to be in consideration, so...
More of a long range.
Yeah. Long, long-term thinking. We're in no position right now.
It was in, I was one of those two, actually, I think there were three or four people, but not too many at the working meeting. And the guy said it was $1,000 or $2,000 per hookup if you're going to try to buy that infrastructure from RCH or whoever. Right.
Right.
That's millions of dollars.
Exactly. And it would require...
So it bothers me that you're thinking, let's, maybe, let's consider it. You already given a good number two weeks ago, and you're, you're sort of like, let's do our own water supply. It's good to have our own water supply.
I apologize.
Well, that sounds like the same mistake that people did, the previous councils made. Well, that sounds like the same mistake that people did, the previous councils made, that got us into certain other fixes.
Jim's description of that is not within the next 12 months. You're probably talking within the next 10 to 15 years.
Yeah, I think decisions being made now are, will affect the future of this city long-term, absolutely. I assure you, nothing I'm going to be putting on the agenda anytime will be, "We need to go buy our water." But if you talk to people about the success of a city or the financial health of one, water comes up first and foremost every single time. And it's just, it was something that was new to me whenever I got into this. I didn't, I've talked to a lot of people about other ideas I had, and over and over again, I was told, "That's great. Do you own your water? No? Okay, well then forget all that." You know, because the ideas you have just don't hold, hold water.
That, that does go in, that, that does go into the overall plan for the city and what we plan to do. If we plan to have a whole lot of settlements of curricula lots or smaller, or a whole lot of commercial, I understand that water supply is super important. But right now, the only sewer in the city is Sonoma Verde, so we're panning away on that as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'll, once you turn that off. Otherwise, it'll start squealing at some point if you can turn that off again.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So in, in reviewing the tax, recommended tax rate, I would challenge the council to do a little better job, as has been heard tonight, to validate that 16 and a half cents number. I think that was a planning number. Don't back your way into it. In context to the budget, because I, I want to applaud the council for its hard work and work it's doing for the city. I know each of you work hard. That's something I've come to even appreciate more. And you're also taking on, I think, some very important issues that need to be addressed. These are problems that were created by Mayor Steinhegen and the prior two city councils that delivered unfulfilled requirements relative, or unfunded requirements relative to ordinance, enforcement, animal control, and ultimately, fire. And you're taking those on, I appreciate that. And so I can, I fully support the need to, at a minimum, sustain a 15-cent tax rate and can be convinced it goes to 16 and a half, but the, you haven't convinced me yet to get to 16 and a half with firm conviction. And I think you've heard that here, the transparency, which I'm going to offer to my fellow citizens, it's our obligation, as much as the city's obligation, to understand that. I think there's plenty of information out there that we can, we can draw upon. I'm not going to get sucked into the social media discussion. So that needs to be done. I want to think the 800-pound gorilla that's in the room is the fire department. I believe the chief has done a good job of scrubbing the numbers as you've gone through the work sessions, as I followed the bouncing ball of the budget. There were a lot of unnecessary and hasty decisions that were made by, first by Mayor Steinhegen and then by the prior council, that forced through the creation of the, of the city fire department against the recommendation of Chief Simmons. I think during that transition period, he became to understand the need to have a more measured transition involving the MCVFD into the MCFR. That was ignored. We unnecessarily spent some $250,000 of the taxpayers' money to procure equipment, unnecessary equipment in some cases, maybe one or two pieces would have been necessary, but not all of it. And a lot of other unnecessary expenses, to include legal expenses, that totaled a large number if you compare it relative to the budget. So I remind my fellow citizens that while we worry about this tax rate moving forward, the tax rate moving forward is a result of the tax rate or the budget excesses that occurred in the past. Just two years ago, we were at a $1.6 million budget. So clearly, this council has moved both in terms of execution, but also in planning and bringing down that number, and I applaud you for that. I know city staff has to work through it. I know the city staff works hard. I encourage a relook at the city staff positions to make sure each job is positioned properly for success. Right now, my sensing is, people want to do a great job. They get up every day, want to do a great job, but they are not necessarily given the right resources to, to be able to do that and deliver it. And a lot of it's just too few, the chief will like this analogy, too few firemen, too many fires. It just sucks your day up. Into reserves, absolutely, I am the strongest supporter there is that I know to create a disciplined set of city reserves and get away from using excess money, moving it around. Every city needs a rainy day fund. Every city needs a capital fund. Every city needs to be able to deal with both anticipated and unexpected future contingencies, to include capital equipment, as well as the impact of, God forbid, a tornado and other severe weather that could come through and really disrupt McClendon-Chisholm. So I applaud the effort that, I've read that draft that Lisa was making mention of. I think it's a really good start, and I think, I thank you for doing that. So I would, I would push through that. But I want to go back, I just, you know, the fire department, because that's an emotional issue that everybody touches on. One, they are heroes every day doing great work for the city, and, you know, I applaud each one of them. The MCVFD, just to remind the public, was running at about $400,000 a year, providing 24/7 operations, 12 hours a day, fully staffed, at night, volunteer staffing, and doing well. Prior mayor or made a decision that, and the prior two councils went along with, that somehow that wasn't the right answer for the city. It was to have a city-owned department, which now the total cost is closer to $600,000. So we all know it's more, government's more expensive than private and enterprise. That is water under the bridge, having been through that entire transition period. I know the firemen are committed to the city. I know the fire chiefs committed to the city. Just march forward and, you know, we'll figure out. I think there's obviously options to move forward. In terms of, last thing I want to just make mention of is future city services. We're just over 3,000, according to TML now, I think, or North Texas Government, in terms of population. We're growing fastest growth, certainly the fastest-growing city in Rockwell County. Rockwell County is going to build out over 100, 300,000, and we're almost, we're over 100,000 now. So growth is going to continue. We're going to be continuing to grow. At some point, we will need a DPS. At some point, we will need to consider our utility infrastructures. At some point, we'll have to have a more demanding discussion involving roads and city streets. But those are all things to be done in the future. So now is the time to start systematically planning and understanding where that, those positions are going to be, because we all can do one thing. We can know it's going to continue to grow. And land properties in Rockwell County are going to continue to grow in, or increase in value. So there's going to be a demand, and Texas Legislature has not done us any favors in the recent session relative to some of the things that will not allow us to necessarily grow the way we, McClendon-Chisholm, wants to grow into the future. We need to, we need to start seriously working with our Texas House Representative-